Cool. So let's see what we got here. Six o'clock. All right. So I will call this meeting of the ordinance committee to order March ninth, two thousand and twenty one, six P M. This meeting is being held remotely due to COVID nineteen restrictions. And it looks like we have all members present. So thanks for coming. Thanks, everybody for joining us. We do have some minutes to approve. So let me just see if I can pull that up really quickly. Actually, Owen, do you have that right in front of you?
I do. Do you want me to just make a motion, Chair?
Yeah, why don't you make the motion? That 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 will be helpful.
I submitted minutes from two ten. So motion to approve the minutes from February tenth, two thousand and twenty one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Owen Zaret.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
And I vote yes as well. Motion passes. Thanks. We'll send those over to Barbara. And now we have some time for public speak time. So if anybody's here for anything that's not on the agenda, and if you don't know what's on the agenda, I can give you a quick update. We have the amending city ordinances, section two dash eight for holidays, cannabis delivery, multifamily family dwellings with fifteen percent affordable units by plan approval, remove existing eight point five accessory apartments or replace with new section, and requiring solar installations on certain new construction. So those are all the things on our agenda. So if you have anything besides those things, now's the time to to say something. And and since it's such a small group, you can just unmute and say your name and address. Okay, looks like we don't have any. So I wanted to thank the city planner for for coming tonight. And I see that Dan is there. Dan, I did receive your comments as well. And so I think what I, you know, last time we discussed mostly the accessory dwellings. And and I don't know, Tom, if you want to pick up with that again, or if you want to jump over to the affordable housing by plan approval as opposed to special permit. I'm kind of either way, I'm happy to move in either direction.
If it's up to me, I'd say, can we jump into the A D U stuff? Just because we had sent a bunch of questions out to Jeff, and I think it would be good to get some feedback on that and sort of see where we are before we before we move on to a second topic.
Sounds good to me.
That works for you.
Yeah, perfect. That's great. So um, so Jeff, did you have a chance to take a look at what we had put together there?
I did. I would say that I guess I would still need a little bit more time to, you know, it's reviewing it and then looking and understanding it and then about like kind of coming up with solutions to all the questions or answers. Might take a little bit more time, but I did get through most of them. I think they're all kind of normal and expected for what where we're at. So so there was nothing that was glaringly wrong, you know, something that was going to send us all the way back to the drawing board. I think it's a lot of kind of details and and pretty specific questions. So I got a document with a set of comments from Councilor Peak that was kind of like a summary from the last meeting, which I will I will commit to watching that. I haven't yet, but I understood that was a pretty good summary of what was discussed. And I saw another, there was another set of comments from a developer of A D Us, which I thought was just helpful. And I don't know, you know, that that was good information for someone who's applied our zoning to this. And then council risks comment. So you know, I'm open to make sure this is a discussion, but I think one of the breakaway points was, you know, the difference between someone who's constructing a new structure and then someone who would be trying to potentially convert an existing structure. So that's like a, that's a breakaway, like a breakout topic. So you know, there's a bunch of different ways to do this, all of which are with the goals of making it easier to build housing. You know, I think one of the things for us to just consider throughout this kind of continuum of process is there will be a point where we we draw a line in the sand and and say, like, this sec, these things will be by right, which in this case, we're talking about like, if they can meet criteria, they could get a building permit. And then over the line of sand over there, you know, we want to make it still an option, but probably things that might need a special permit, or at least that that additional level of review. And you know, based on my experience and things I've heard so far and things I've read, I mean, one place to draw that line in the sand is is just keeping the the notion of one additional unit. So if you're, if you have a property with a house, one additional unit, we want to try to keep, we want to really try really hard to keep that the by right version. Things that go beyond one unit, you know, those are really typically things that would maybe go through a little bit more careful review process. It's kind of like one one threshold.
Sure, sure. And that's one of the things we did discuss. Council Peak.
Yeah. So on that note, I had given this a little bit of thought and Jeff, we've talked a bit prior to this. And can I share my screen? Is that cool?
All right, let me just make you a co-host. Okay, it should be good now.
So here's the PDF that I had shared. It seems like one section of this that I really liked and that I just wanted to, we didn't touch on this, but it's just an idea I had actually this afternoon that I wanted to sort of bring up. When we talk about this sort of line in the sand, when we're, if we look at eight point five seven A, it, I don't, I don't exactly have a fully formed idea here, but I just wanted to sort of bounce this off. It says something about the following waivers of sections eight point five three, eight point five four, yada, 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 may be approved by special permit from the zoning board of appeals, provided that the board finds that the proposed accessory dwelling unit will be substantially consistent with the purpose of this section eight point five and will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. And I was thinking, my, I like this section because it's basically saying like, we're going to set these as the ground rules for something that we think should be basically uncontroversial. If you're going to do something else, that's also possible, but you're going to have to go to the Z B A and demonstrate that it is not going to be detrimental to your neighborhood for you to do that thing. And so, yeah, when we talk about if you if you were proposing something with more than one accessory dwelling, okay, at that point, you kind of have to go and and pitch that. My one, my one concern here, and I want to know what what Jeff, you and what my fellow counselors think about this. My one concern is the word may, because that the word may in this context suggests that a person could demonstrate that the proposed accessory dwelling is consistent with the purposes of the section and that it will not have detrimental impacts on the neighborhood and that the Z B A could nonetheless deny it despite them having demonstrated that. If it said that they shall issue the special permit, provided that the homeowner or that 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 it fits these criteria, like, would that, would that be better? That's just my opening question. That may, like, whenever I see something saying may, it's like, they have the option to do it, but but they can also just not do it for no reason. That when you're talking about something like, you know, permitting and stuff, that that just makes me a little bit nervous.
I hear that. What do you think, Jeff?
I guess what I was thinking about in getting ready for this meeting was I would offer my opinion and it's just trying to understand, we have multiple layers of bringing this through a process. So do my best to anticipate what other people might say as well as like the professional opinion of this, which is I think it will be difficult to put shall there because you, the special permit in and of itself is a discretionary process. So I think knowing that we're moving a couple options to special permit, it's important that we all understand that right now, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance does not have flexibility. If you do not meet the provisions, it doesn't give the Z B A the authority to even consider it. So I just wonder, like, the nature of the special permit, I don't think we can have an ordinance that can put stuff into a special permit process and then and then sort of demand that the Z B A has to grant the special permit. I think that's a little bit of the give and take with putting it in special permit. I see it a little bit differently is that you know, the the Z B A may approve it if the if the findings are met. I think I think it is, I don't know, I think it is supportive of of moving it into a special permit process. It's tricky one. I guess I can't answer that all the way. I think it will, you'll, I think we'll perpetually run into problems at the next couple of stages of the amendment process if we put, if we if we insinuate that a special permit shall be granted, because I think the special permit by its nature is discretionary.
Yeah, Councilor Zaret.
Maybe I'm thinking about this the wrong way, but I'm think I am thinking if we put the word like, so this stipulation in section eight point five seven are are for a way for considerations of exemptions. And if we were to put the word shall there, then my inference is that, well, we might as well just make all of those items, the stipulations, part of the by right requirements to begin with, and there's no even point for the Z B A to weigh in. If you do, by using the word may and putting in these stipulations, it kind of, it pulls, it says that these are exceptions to the rules and that they're points for consideration when when looking at these exceptions. But that's maybe I'm understanding it wrong, but I think that that's why you have to use the word may. And again, shall would just imply that, well, these, this is the ordinance, this is the actual zoning. And so it doesn't, there's no real, there's no real choice for the Z B A here. So that that was my only thought.
Dan, I saw your your hand up and then Tom.
I just want to say that I understand that these boards, the zoning board of appeals, our planning board, they have a lot of discretion in what they're doing. And if you change the word to shall, I agree with Owen, you have to have a lot of specificity so that they know they can't go around it. The word shall makes it tougher for interpretation and lends to legal issues, I think, if it's denied when there is specificity, but may gives the board discretion. That said, I'm concerned about the subjectivity, and maybe Jeff, you can enlighten me because I'm sure that quote unquote detrimental impact on the neighborhood is a subjective decision. How is that arrived at? Because all right, so they're gonna build a bigger house that is required under this section of bigger maximum floor space, but it's detrimental to the neighborhood. That seems very subjective, lends itself to personal preference within the board. I'm I'm curious, I know that's probably out there in a lot of zoning issues, but it 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 seems to me that there's a lot of, the discretion lends itself to a subjective decision. Does everybody understand what I'm getting at here?
Yeah. And and I, and I think, you know, Dan, I think that that was kind of where I was going with it was because substantially consistent is subjective as well. But but then again, you know, I mean, I think that's kind of the nature of boards is what you have. You have a, you have a group of people that can, you know, interpret what is, you know, being provided, which is substantially consistent or detrimental to the neighborhood. And then the consensus on that would, you know, bring the objectivity to the situation. Because if you, because you can't, in zoning, you can't spell out every specific, you know, nuance, because it would be thousands of pages long. And then there, you know, there's an infinite number of possibilities. So, you know, I think may probably is appropriate here. But I'm happy to, you know, Tom, I know you had your hand up, so why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, I, I like, look, I'll back down on this if I'm the only one who's concerned. I'm concerned about the idea, you know, that you're basically saying that if they can demonstrate, like, it's so, okay, the the onus is on the person petitioning the board to demonstrate that, in fact, there is no detrimental effects and that this is in line with what the zoning is there for. And that even if they prove that, the Z B A is allowed to deny them for no reason? Because that's how I'm reading it.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be for no reason. I think you, I think we're, we are going down like we could spend all night talking about this. I think you have to give deference to the board. I think the board has, you have to give them the opportunity to under, like, hear what concerns are that might come up. And then you have to rely on your board to make an adequate, you know, assessment of what would be detrimental. I mean, I think I I think that we're tricky for sure. But I think we have to understand that the special permit process is 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 one of the only real mechanisms we're going to have to allow additional flexibility. So like, if we, it's that, it's kind of, maybe it's not the best analogy, but this line in the sand, like, we need to find the parameters that are going to be the the basis for just building permit. Then the other things are going to get, you know, they're going to be subject to that other process. I think you seem to be, there might be some questions about the process, the special permit process and discretion. But we can't, we can't remove that unless the only other option is to make some of this a different permit process. So the more predictable to take out some of the discretion that may be of concern is is site plan approval. You know, that's the, if you're talking about like a gradation of, you know, discretion, you have the, the, the goal here is by right, which is like, there's no discretion. It's like, if it meets it, you get it. Then the next level in would be site plan review, which is where, you know, the planning board can talk about tweaking this, maybe the driveway needs to move over a couple of feet, but the inherent, you know, approach is that you're getting your permit. Like, it's, it is, it's, it's a normal and expected use. And then you have the special permit process, which, you know, it's, it's a flaw probably in Massachusetts that that special permit category does have discretion. There, there needs to be a little bit of trust in your board that has that discretion to, you know, in my experience, boards, especially Z B As here, if they hear twenty arguments, you know, against something of those twenty, there's probably two that, like, okay, these two are kind of important. We need to work on these two. Can they be mitigated somehow? Yes, both, both of them can be mitigated. You you've successfully gotten your special permit. Like, that's the nature of the special permit process. So there's worry that we're, we, we may have a hard time removing that discretion unless we're going to make a site plan approval.
I guess where I was going was that I, I don't, I, I mean, like, I'm certainly offering, like, I'm certainly giving them discretion. What I'm saying is do we have any ability to actually set the parameters for what things they should be considering when they're making that whole thing? So for example, like, certainly if they make the determination that something has a detrimental effect on the neighborhood or that it isn't in line with the purpose of the zoning, then they should turn it down. What I'm a little bit concerned about is the idea that even if somebody demonstrates that neither of, or even, even if there's no evidence that either of those things are true, they could still have, they could still have their special permit denied for, the way that I'm reading this, under my understanding of just the way that ordinances are written. When you're saying may, you're saying that they have the, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm reading this is to say that they have the ability to deny this for any reason.
I think it's a stretch. I think your, I think your interpretation of may is correct in general terms that, yes, they could be denied for any reason, but I don't think that's really the way it would pan out. The way that it would generally get approached is we're going to establish the line in the sand, the things that are like parameters for you to get the accessory dwelling unit by right. And if you don't meet two of them, like, those are really the two issues. Those are the two issues that the zoning board would appropriately be looking at to determine if the variation of those two are detrimental. The the rest of it, you, in a lot of ways, like, this is the difference between the legislative and executive branches, you have to, you have to trust your boards to have the the ability to make a sound decision. It, you know, I don't know. I feel, I feel like we're a little bit stuck on this and the first, this is the first question I think we got.
Just to get clear, like, I think the the reason why it's an important thing for us, and I'm, and I'm hearing what you're saying, that you seem to feel like that wouldn't be an issue, and I'm, I'm willing to take your word on that. But what, the reason why I think it's an important thing is because if we're talking about saying that certain things are going to go to special permit process, I think that it's relevant to sort of figure out what that's actually going to look like for for people who who end up in that category. If there's, if there's situations where we think that's going to be like a, like, if that, that that's potentially going to be too difficult, like, too high of a bar, that's just something we have to consider. Because what what I'd like to do is say that in a lot of these cases, yeah, we just move things into like eight point five seven if there's, if there's things that we think, like additional things that we think should be applicable for waivers. But I just feel like I need to have an understanding of the process.
Okay, so I saw Counselor Flood raise her hand.
Hi, just a quick thought on that language, Tom and others. I'm wondering, like, to me, when I think of detrimental, I think of like overwhelming health and safety concerns. So like, I don't know. Counselor Peak, would you feel comfortable if the language was more directed like that? I mean, because to me, I I do think we're kind of lingering on this, and I don't see too many situations where something would would be denied without some blaring cause. But I just, I just go straight to like health and health and safety concerns, where at which point they're probably not coming to us for requests for a permit anyway. So it's just one thought on that.
Yeah, and I, and I would say, you know, so you know, one of the things that I've seen being, you know, just in the past, being brought forward as things that were considered detrimental, you know, if if a building was blocking someone's view, you know, that's, that's one of the things that I've seen in the past, or, you know, they were concerned about, you know, a driveway coming out into a blind corner. You know, so there, you know, there, and also aesthetic things, unfortunately, you get put in that category as well. But Counselor Rist, I saw you had your hand up as well.
Just a quick thought. If we make the rest of this zoning ordinance specific to things that make it by right easier for someone to build an accessory dwelling, these kinds of special permits will be few and far between. And I say that because a lot of the issues before was the square footage issue, the separate pre-existing structure that was able to be used. If we want to make those a little more specific, my thought is these kinds of things will be rare, more rare. Whereas in the origin, the ordinance we have now, there's a lot of, a lot of ways you're going to have to try and and go around the zoning. So that's my thought. I think we should go back to the rest of it. And maybe that makes it easier before we have to have someone apply for a special permit.
I would, I would agree with that. Let's see, I have someone else's hand is raised, Christopher Lee. So Christopher, just make sure you say your name and address for the record.
Sure, Chris Lee, two forty seven Coombe Road. And I, Dan actually kind of said what I was going to say, and I just, I concur with Jeff and with Dan. I I think the more important thing in this is rather than the word shall or may, is be very careful about what gets put into the by right category and what needs permission by special permit. Because we, we have seen, we have seen giving a zoning board too much freedom have pretty detrimental consequences and specifically talking about Amherst, which gives their zoning board a little bit too much leeway and results in. We actually saw somebody sell their house because of the arguments that it, that it ensued. I mean, that was, I don't even know if that was an extreme situation, but it was pretty bad. And it was because of the ambiguity in the bylaw and and the amount of power the Z B A had to interpret it. It allowed the neighbors to basically get cutthroat and also come up with their own interpretations of the bylaw. And we kind of saw that with going all the way back to our first one that we built in East Hampton at Eight Mary Street. We saw that in the hearing there as well. With the ambiguity that's in the bylaw today, we saw neighbors going at each other's throats unnecessarily. So that's, that's what I would keep in mind as you're considering what to include in each route. And the shall and may question.
Thanks for that. All right. So Tom, what do you, what do you think? I mean, do you want to just continue to you know, look at the the other pieces of the ordinance that we had discussed before and and see if we can, you know, have as much specificity as we can and then and then kind of figure out the the line in the sand that Jeff was talking about so we can
Yeah, I'm fine with, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, it's fine. No, it's fine.
I'm fine with that. I just think that when we're talking about this, using this line in the stamp thing, I think we do need to spend a, we need to, you need to be a little bit thoughtful about what happens if you end up on the other side of the sand. What what does that actually look like for somebody who has some, you know, one of these things that there that we talk about here when we're talking about setbacks or parking or whatnot? Does that, like, if you end up on on that side of the sand, like, what is the actual standard to which you're going to have to be prepared to make a case for yourself and 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 like, and I just, something about the ambiguity of of this concerns me. But I think we can, we can move back, we can take a step back for sure and talk about what is allowed by right. And, you know, just with the notion that, like, I'm, I'm going to lean more towards things being allowed by right as a matter of course, unless I can feel really comfortable that that there, that there's like a well-defined process that somebody's going to be able to know exactly what they're going into. And it sounds like the special permit process might just not allow for that because of the level of discretion given to, you know, the folks on that board. Yeah, we can just go back and and go over the comments if that works for you.
Yeah, let's do that. And you know what? As you were saying, that one, one thing popped into my mind and it was, you know, generally, this kind of comes from what Chris said, which was generally, it's the neighbors that are going to get, the ones that are going to try to go to a special permit hearing and try to stop it. So maybe you require them to have a letter of support from the neighbors, from their butters. And then it takes out the ambiguity. So anyway, all right, let's go ahead and do this.
So this was the first one we asked was, and I know, Chris, in the email that you had sent me, you had mentioned this as well. We, you know, the the question was about this, the setbacks and like, how does this work if the the thing is not at the setback? And how do we determine whether or not it is at the setback? And just sort of like, I, we were just curious how this process actually goes off because obviously getting somebody to actually hire a surveyor can be very expensive. So what if, what if it's like two feet away from the setback? Is that is that fine? Like, I don't know, I'm just curious about this sort of step.
So this is good. Some of these do not have the best, like, there's not like a silver bullet, but worth discussion. So you know, I think this needs to be, I think I'm happy to do it, but I think this needs to be brought through and in front of the building commissioner to make sure that you know, he would agree. But the proposal, I think, was within three feet of the setback line. You know, I think that there's always this general willingness to have, be somewhat tolerant, you know, like that if you're clearly way far from your setback line, then there's, there's really no need. As you get closer and closer to this, whatever the setback is, you know, it's going to become more and more important. Everybody carries liability of building something where it doesn't belong. So the homeowner has a lot, a significant amount of liability. The building inspector has liability in 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 approving a permit without a survey. So to me, if you take one step further, it's, it's, it's more about does the property owner know where the property line is? Like, so because that's actually the real important part is knowing where your
Like, so, because for you, that's actually the real important part is knowing where your property line is, because then everything gets queued off of that. It's, it, it would be an ideal situation if people were more accustomed to, to having a survey as part of, you know, considering a project, any kind of addition, you know, you're talking about a significant investment and the survey is a couple thousand dollars, maybe it's a thousand to a couple thousand dollars to make sure that you are gonna be placing the structure in the right spot. So there, we have to flesh this out with the building inspector. I think the proposed language was in, within three feet of the setback. So let's say you have your property line and the required setback is fifteen feet. And if you can kind of demonstrate that you think you're within, you know, eighteen to twenty feet of that, then that would be the i- ideal case to say that a survey is not necessary. But as you get closer and, and I think, you know, as some people in the room, you know, as you really start to explore your property and figure out where can you put something, a lot of times you want to tuck, you're gonna wanna tuck it up against the setback to give yourself a yard, or it's just gonna be like necessary. I can understand the am- ambiguity about at, at or near. So that language is pretty vague. We can make it clear. But as part of moving forward, there is a guide that we're trying to, to, to work on that will help homeowners. You know, once we get through this process, homeowners will have this guide. And I just, I wouldn't wanna necessarily scare people away from, from looking at a survey or getting a survey to, to verify, especially as you get closer and closer to the setback. It's pretty common, it's a pretty common step in, in taking, in making an addition or an investment in your property to have the survey. So I just don't wanna downplay it too much. Um, I would need, need to run it by the building inspector and find out if like, building commissioners have some kind of leeway that they would, they would find, you know, acceptable. Okay, thanks, thanks Jeff. Dan, and then Chris.
A, a thought, Jeff, if, which I hope we do, allow pre-existing structures to be converted to an accessory dwelling. They would be, their setbacks, whatever they have had because they exist now, would be grandfathered in. If they're closer to the line than they, we want now, I, I, I just hope the language allows for that because it's a pre-existing structure. So I just want you to make sure we consider that ordinance committee.
Thanks, Dan. Chris.
Hey, um, so my, my comment on setbacks, and this kind of goes to anything that has a special permit process. It's not as big of an issue with by right. But requiring someone to do a survey prior to knowing whether or not they can actually build the house represents potential lost money. Um, and it's, it's one of the many things that someone has to spend money on in order to go in front of a ZBA or, or try to do the project. So one of the things that, that we've been trying to encourage towns to do is to basically require a survey or a surveyor to cite the building before the permit is issued, but not as something that's contingent on issuing a special permit or, or appearing before a ZBA. Just so a homeowner doesn't have to incur two thousand dollars without knowing whether or not they're actually gonna, gonna build this house for their parents or something.
Okay, that seems, that seems fair. Counselors, Eric, do you have a thought?
No.
Okay.
I, I, I concur with what Mr. Lee said. I think the way it's structured right now, this section that we're looking at, eight point five two B is, is, it's the presumption that you're, you're gonna get, you're, you're just building this if you can meet the setback, right? So that's good. The survey verification, you know, we should refine that language. And then I think what the suggestion was, if we go back to that section that we were talking at the beginning, that special permit section, you know, that, that's, that's a place where maybe we can add some language to, to be clearer that if you are going to a special permit, you know, you may not need the survey at the application, but you might need it prior to the issuance of a building permit. Just to, just, you know, to, yeah, to reduce that kind of risk. I like the idea of prior to a building permit getting issued, you know, if there's agreement kind of for people who are gonna be, by that point, you're gonna be pretty well invested in a project. And to really know for sure that you're gonna build it where you, where you need to, you know, that would be a good time. So language that around prior to a building permit for survey, that, that works really well.
Cool. Okay, uh, are we good to move on to the next one then?
I think so, yeah.
All right, um. Okay, yeah, this is, um, yeah, we talked a little bit about, uh, eight point five three B and, um, that the owner should occupy the, like, either, yeah, that they, uh, that they should occupy one of the units as their primary residences except for bona fide temporary absences. And we were kind of wondering, um, if this was necessary. There were some questions about, whether there's some concerns about absentee landlords, but I guess one of the questions we had is how this was substantially different than a, like, say the, say that I was renting, um, a house out and I decided to create an ADU in the basement that has its own egress and parking and whatnot. How that's different from me just owning a two-family and renting both units out and, and why, um, like, why, why wouldn't this be allowed on, on, um, a rental property? That's, that was just a thought that we had. Yeah.
I think it's, oh, I can defer, I can wait, um.
No, I would, I would defer to the, the wisdom and professional experience of the planner before I say anything.
Go ahead, Jeff. I thought about this. So, you know, I, I think initially, some, so some of the, so disclaimer, which is that I had no hand in writing the existing ordinance that we have. So it's, you know, looking at it and understanding a little bit about this progression of trying to allow accessory dwelling units. I think this is probably one of those older safeguards, you know, to, it's been a progression, like, to get accessory dwelling units, kind of more and more accepted every time you, even there's the private planner and a private group of people who, there's some level of safeguard in there, just to make sure that we're not going too crazy. That's probably where this came from, to give people this level of comfort that it will not, like, they're, the house next to them will not turn into a rental property. You know, that's, I think that's kind of the, that's probably the impetus for that, is to make sure that there's an owner, you know, in, in my time in Amherst, when I was there, there was a lot of, it's a, it's a different dynamic there. They have a lot more rental properties and they have a lot more issues with management of a rental property. So usually you only see the poor management on the outside and it's really usually just a little glimpse at how poorly it's managed inside. And so some of this gets to management of a rental unit. But then I think Counselor Peak pointed out, how is this different than a duplex? And so that's where I, I really start to see how we can start this conversation that in our zoning today, a duplex, so if you talked about a new duplex, they're allowed, um, with a building permit in, in three districts, the R five, the R ten, the R fifteen. So especially in those districts, you know, someone could develop a, a property as a duplex and both units could be rented and there's no, there is no owner occupancy requirement. So this would represent kind of like a loosening up of the regulations. I, I do know that there, we, we might expect there to be questions about just whether that could change the dynamic more than we want in, in East Hampton right now. Like if, if there are investors who wanna scoop up properties and then just start renting them, you know, that is probably okay. We probably need more rental units, you know, but it starts out with this discussion of the homeowner trying to add the unit for like their, their in-laws. And then, you know, maybe it's an Airbnb and then maybe both of them are Airbnb and it's, we just have to be prepared for that discussion. But I think the argument that the, in three districts now, you can build a duplex with a building permit and we don't have any other, you know, restrictions on rental. Okay. Counselors, Eric.
Yeah, I think that's what I was about to say. Like, I want people to move here. I want the city to be affordable now. If through the process of an owner creating extra units and then making them both rental units and somehow by making their, the rental units are overpriced, that's a problem and that's a whole other discussion. But I don't have an issue with, I don't care if the owner lives there or not. I want people to just be able to come here and I want more units for people to come and live here. So that's, that's my priority. I don't really care if the owner lives there or not. If they're rental units, I expect that they're taken care of appropriately, but that's again a different discussion and not something you would legislate in this ordinance.
Well, and another thought is that, you know, we could look at the three districts where duplex are allowed by, by right and we could match that to the landlord, uh, piece of this, you know. So in those three districts that I, I mean, but then again, then you're differentiating between districts, which we already do, but, and that might not be right, but anyway. Looks like, so Chris had his hand up and then Erica. So, um, let's go to Chris.
Yeah, and if I'm, if I'm talking too much, just tell me to be quiet. I know I was invited to the meeting.
You build these things, man. We wanna hear from you.
So I, um, I guess two points. I'm a, I'm a pretty big advocate of the, um, owner occupancy requirement. And that's coming from someone who wants these to be easier to build. And the reason, and I'm also a landlord as well. And the data from the West Coast, which, which is significantly further along on ADUs is that when you have an arms-length transaction between an owner occupant landlord and renting a unit, the rent is naturally lower. Because you're not, you're not getting a corporate landlord who's pricing, uh, who's pricing rent based on profit margins. You're getting it pricing, you're getting, you're getting a unit price based on inviting a neighbor to live next to you. So I would keep that in mind. And then what Jeff was saying about investors and speculation com- coming in is also true. When you have that owner occupancy requirement, you're also, it's a two-edged sword. You're, you're, you're gonna eliminate the ability for someone to come in and speculate and, and, and create investment units. But you're also gonna reduce capital flows into East Hampton. So you're gonna be relying on owners to build these, which is also shown to be, owners don't really build ADUs as rental units. They build it for family. Um, we've, we've only built, actually, we've built zero ADUs as a rental unit so far. And it's because homeowners can't wrap their head around spending a six-figure sum and go into debt in order to get a stream of rental income. So it's, it's like a weird, it's a weird space. Um, and then the only other piece on this, so North Hampton, as I'm sure some people are aware, they started with it, they started with ADUs and they're in the process of making two-family by right throughout the city. So I think it's a double, it's two levels. Like you, you're gonna go ADU by right. Feel comfortable with that and then you go two-family by right. And when you talk about two families, it's the same thing as an ADU. You just pull the, uh, the owner occupancy requirement.
Okay, that's interesting. Good information. Uh, Counselor Flood.
That's great information. Thank you, Chris. I mean, that was incredible. Um, I just wanted to raise sort of the same equity and local economy flag because, um, another, it is a separate discussion, but, uh, Planner Bag mentioned Airbnb. And currently, we do not allow, so if you have a two-family and you have an accessory dwelling unit or you even want an Airbnb part of your two-family, that's not allowed in East Hampton. So this is sort of, it's a snowball that, um, I think it's a larger discussion to have, bringing in the Airbnb into, to the city. But, um, it just, it does take away an opportunity for some owner occupied income when investors come in and start grabbing properties to do these things. So I, I'm very much in favor of keeping the owner occupancy in place for many of the reasons that Chris just laid out in a much more eloquent way. Thank you, Chris.
All right, Jeff.
I have a question if I could in, to, to Ms. Flood. Something that you said, I, maybe I, I'm not sure if I fully understood, but do you, did you feel like there was a re- a restriction that you could not do in Airbnb? Is that, was that, was that my, I don't know if I heard everything.
That is one hundred percent the case. And that's, I mean, that's information from your office. I mean, I was trying to do that. And I had several meetings with Jamie and it's very clear that is not allowed. So the deal is, it's like because it's not written out, that Jamie's much better at explaining this stuff, but essentially what we have on the books now does not, if somebody is gonna stay for less than thirty days, are various levels of like short-term housing, lodging and rental. You, you have to essentially have a minimum of thirty stay, thirty days to rent a, a unit in a two-family. And it's very specifically two-family restrictive. So, which is kind of a bummer, cause there's a bunch of two-families in New City with older folks who could maybe have some income uh, and remain owner occupied or families or new families who buy a unit and anyway. That's okay. I was just saying, the way it was described is there's essentially a grayed-out area that does not allow for short-term, less than thirty days.
Okay, I'm gonna double check on something because if you have already a second unit and, you know, some of the, some of the tests that I know that, I know some of the tests that we run are, and we were talking to people is do you really have like a legal second unit? Like, does it have the required egress? And it, you know, is it at least pre-existing knocking, like, so do you really have a second unit? But from there on out, like, I don't, I, I'll speak to Jamie too, but I, you know, if you would just have that second unit, I would wonder whether you, whether there's any restriction on short-term rentals. I know that we talked about setting up something to clarify the process and expectations for short-term rentals.
Yeah.
But we don't have that. And then maybe that's where Jamie's projecting that we can't, it's not allowed, but like, I don't know that we have. I'll, I wanna circle back to that.
Yeah, and I'd love to chat with you further on it. There seems to be a very clear distinction in Jamie's mind between single-family and duplex. Uh, it, with the way the ordinance is written. And so, um, yeah, I'd reach out to Jeff and I'll definitely follow up with you on that.
Yeah, I'll do that. Thanks. So, and we also wanna make sure that we have clarification around how this would affect accessory dwell- dwelling units as well. Okay, that, that makes sense. And, and it seems, I don't, I don't know, I can't see Tom anymore. This, the way that this is set up.
I'm raising my hand.
I mean, I can't see. So when you guys raise your hand, I, you're, I can't see you, just so you know. So like, say something if I don't call on you. All right, so go ahead, Tom. And it looks like Dan, when I clicked over to the next screen, you had your hand up too. Okay, so go ahead.
So, yeah, a cou- couple of questions. Um, I mean, so I guess one of my things is that right now in East Hampton, people are buying up single-family homes and renting them out. So I just, there's, there's that end, end of this where like, extent that that's going on, I, I just am not convinced that, um, this would necessarily make that worse. If anything, like, it would make for more rental units. So that, that, that's, that's one area in which I actually kind of wanna explore the possibility of relaxing this. But the other part of this, which I, I really wanna think about, uh, just because it's not clear to me through this, is what happens if, um, just, just as an example, um, I am a homeowner and I have one of these set up and then I have to take a job and the market's not in a good place and I decide to rent my house out. Am I just, do I, am I not allowed to do that then? Do I have to sell my house because I rent my house out and also keep this ADU rented out? Like, that, that's, um, I think that's my biggest concern is, is how you handle that sort of flexibility. But I, I'm just saying that like, I mean, I'm aware of, yeah, the, what's going on on the West Coast. And I think a lot of that has to do with sort of broader problems that are going on on the West Coast property market. But I'm just not personally convinced that the right way to fix our housing problem is to make it so that less housing can be built. With, with all due respect to, you know, the folks who are in favor of this.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Uh, Dan.
I think I like what Chris said, uh, Tom, but I also hear what you're saying. I think we have to carve out an issue like that. Maybe going back to eight point five seven where there is a waiver, the person's gonna leave. Can I continue to rent my ADU? I think that, but I also don't want corporate companies coming in here, building a lot of ADUs and renting them out. I think that, they have to be owner occupied in my mind. I, I could be convinced otherwise, but I think that's important. The other thing I wanted to say is we need to carve out the ability for Airbnbs. I think they're valuable to have. And accessory dwellings can really lend themselves to that. I think they're valuable to have and accessory dwellings can really lend themselves to that. So I don't know, Jeff, if that has to be carved, written better, the Airbnb language. Because that may be something that, that explodes a little bit and it's not a bad thing, I don't think. Have people coming into our home for cultural chaos and staying for a week in an Airbnb. Why not? I mean, if it's an ADU, that's all I'm saying. Uh, uh, yet the issue of using a duplex for an Airbnb, that's not where I'm going. This is about ADUs and whether they can be Airbnb.
Well, I definitely, I've definitely approached this in, at least in my thinking that if you had, if you owned a home, right? And then you built an ADU or a second unit or converted something that you should have the right to do an Airbnb there. Because I think that's revenue that could keep someone here. And that's valuable to East Hampton right now. I think that that's an important thing. I think to Tom's point about the situation changing. You know, I, I believe that that's what that special permit provision would do. Is, is that, you know, it may not be our best tool. It's a little bit of like a blunt, you know, like whack a mole. But it's the, but it would allow a person who finds himself in a new situation to seek that special permit. So they could have a rental in both. And I think, you know, and that would give some of the parameters, you know. For, for people to understand what's happening there. But I think the approach for the ADUs and the second unit on the property. You know, has always been geared towards allowing it to be a rental, especially if the home, homeowner lives on the property. I think that gives that oversight and management that, that is something I do think there's a, a value of having the owner there. And we can't guarantee that every owner is going to take care of their property, but I think it just significantly increases the likelihood that the property will be better maintained. Um, and it'll kind of just be a little bit more reflective of what's happening in East Hampton. We want to keep those owners, you know, here. And, and give them kind of a crack at, well, potentially this extra place for the, for someone or rental or that kind of thing.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Erica, let's see your hands up.
I just want to stress the other part of what Chris said, which is it's a little, uh, trying to put my hand down, sorry. A little bit of like an organic rent control. So I think, I think, um. The real estate market, we're all aware, is really out of control for a lot of people right now. And so those, the rental pricing going up. I like the effect of having the owner occupied units and having that be something that happens organically, as Chris has pointed out. Again, I know plenty of owner occupied landlords who keep their rent very reasonable just to have good neighbors. So, um, this, this is at that community, um, local economy level where things happen. Where I think that's just another important piece to explore. Um, and, and Tom, I, I mean, I agree, I agree, it's a changing landscape. But, um, just in terms of looking at rental prices and what happens with investment properties. Versus owner occupied rental properties. It's something interesting to continue to look at.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, um, you know, and Tom, I'm, I'm happy to kind of work through this one. Uh, and almost, it's almost seems like, um, there's some pretty good arguments on both sides of this one. So we might want to just come back to this after we digest it a little bit more. Um, but unless you feel like you want to continue to stay on this one and hammer through it.
I'm fine to sort of come back and digest this and I'm interested, I, I know that, um, when I'd spoken to Jeff earlier, uh, this week. Uh, one thought that he had had was that next time we have a meeting about this or. Um, at whatever point we're done digesting this and the other one, whether that's next time or the time after that or whatever. That, um, that we invite the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership to participate. Uh, and get their thoughts on this, um, since, you know, they were very involved in the Housing Production Plan. My thing is that I just in general think that the sort, the, the, you know, the biggest source of our skyrocketing prices. Is a scarcity of units. And so I'm, I'm just not personally convinced that restricting the number of units. I mean, I agree that there's a lot of specu- like seedy speculative stuff that we don't necessarily like. I'm just not personally convinced that like, that, 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 uh, that restricting. Further restricting the number of units is going to, um, lead to a situation where you see lower rents. But I do, I do want to chew on what, uh, Chris had to say because that's an interesting perspective and I hadn't really thought of it.
Okay, great. And it looks like Chris raised his hand again. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, one quick follow up on to Tom. So, um, I don't know that it's speculation driving prices up in places like East Hampton. I think it's just the fact that it's a extremely desirable place to live. And, and I think people from outside of East Hampton are driving prices up. I don't think people who have lived and been born and raised in East Hampton are paying these prices for houses. I think it's people who are newly coming. And to the thing about shortage of units. Uh, just because of how mobile labor is and how mobile people are. Uh, the more units you add, the more desirable East Hampton becomes. Which, uh, like you can't, you can't create enough units to, uh, to keep prices down. It's just not, it's just not possible. Like, you're not going to create enough units in East Hampton or North Hampton or Amherst to keep prices down. But what you can do is create a path for someone who lives there to get a rental stream. Whether it's Airbnb or whether they're building a house for their mom to split taxes. Uh, and not be dealt, not be dealing with discrimination and saying, I'm not going to sell you my house. Because you're from New York City and you make $250,000 a year as a software developer and you can work from home. Like that path isn't possible. And there's more of those people, at least for the next, probably like two, three, five years. That are going to continue to want to live under the shadow of Mount Tom and be able to go outside and not have to deal with traffic. So it's like, it, it sucks, but it's, you just got to, like, what are these going to do for the people that live here? And by keeping the control on the street rather than in the hands of people that are here yet. You can, you can just make it more palatable and easier to, to bear as you repair infrastructure. And raise taxes and do all the things that are necessary to keep the town a nice place to live for the next 50 years.
Okay, um, so I, I, I would say let's, let's keep moving forward and we'll, we'll just, we'll come back to this one if that's all right with you, Tom.
All right, cool. Um, the next one that we brought up was, um, there, uh, shall not be more than one. Accessory apartment on the lot. And we were taking, thinking about things where, you know, like a barn conversion or things like this. One thought I had had since the last time, and actually Jeff, this, this sort of comes back to what you were just mentioning about a situation where someone needs to, to move. There, um, there are a couple, what we might want to do is in that 8.5 section, seven, the special permits. We might want to add a couple things that could be considered a special permit. So for instance, in that section right now. Um, there isn't. A option for them to grant a special permit for more than one accessory dwelling. There isn't an option for them to grant a special permit for somebody who needs to leave town and wants to rent out their dwelling. So that might be a way that we could solve this issue is to say that one is allowed and that for more than one. You might need to go, but, but to make it clear in this that that is something that they're allowed to consider. Provided that it's not seen as, um, a negative. Wha- what do you guys think about that?
I, I see that Dan has his hand up. I would say that, that, for me, that's a good enough thing to put a note on that section for. Uh, I like that idea. So I think it might be worth putting a note down in the special permit section saying adding, you know, uh. More than one, adding, uh, uh, having to leave, you know, so adding those things as we go, just so we don't forget them. Um, I think would be helpful. And then Dan, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say 8.57 does give us the special permit process. Whenever we have a desire to put more than one unit, I talked to Jeff a lot about this. Um, I think by right, if you're going to build an accessory dwelling or convert an existing structure to one unit. That should be allowed by right. But if we go to more than one unit, there's other things to consider. All kinds of things, parking, whatever else might be considered if you take a barn and you make it two or three units. You were talking about that last time. So that could be in the special permit area because that should have some discussion. But if it's easier for a person to build a cottage or accessory dwelling. Or convert an existing structure with one unit. And if that, it seems to be an easier path to get these done, I'm all for it. If the special permit is there so that we might have the opportunity for someone to put two units in an old barn. Or an old garage or something, uh, that's fine. But there's probably good reason to have it discussed by the planning board. So I'm okay with one unit. I think that's fine. And the special permit allowing 8.57 is a great catchall, Tom, for these kinds of things where we're not sure. We let the planning board make a decision based on the specifics of that particular circumstance. Does that make sense?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I think it makes sense. I think that that's, that's the idea with that, the, the catchall at the end and just making it clear where, what, what could go in there. Um, I think part of this with the, I think this is how we started it, is that if you're, you know, if you're building something new. We have to think about that scenario, but then if you're converting something that's existing. So I think what, well, I think we want to do with the existing structures that might be eligible for like a conversion of some sort. Is to take out the size limit. And, because I think.
Yeah, that's, that's one of our things in a, in a minute.
Right. Cause I, well, I think it goes part and parcel with, if you take, take it in progression, like if, if we're okay with the idea of one being by right. I, I think we're in a sweet spot there. I think we, we all want this to pass, right? And so one by right, and then if you're looking at the existing structure and you can convert it into one. You know, there shouldn't be the size limit. The, generally speaking, the reason in most cases for the size limit. Is like the, the potential to change the neighborhood. You, you know, that's why if you build something new, there, we should probably talk about a size limit. And that's why it's always kind of been pitched as kind of small. But if you have an existing structure. That's most likely like baked into the neighborhood and the conversion of that, like it's not the size anymore. The size doesn't really matter in a converted thing. So just if we move in part and parcel, like keeping with the idea of one so far. And then when we move to the existing structure, you know, allowing it to be converted regardless of its size. Cause if you have a really big structure, then if, and you're really creative and you're up for an adventure to make multiple units. Then, then you're probably going to get bumped to that special permit just because it, it, it could, it could be different than what we're trying to anticipate here.
But I don't want to rule it out. I'm sorry, Owen had to say.
No, 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 that's, I, I think it's fine. I know that Owen raised his hand, so I wanted to give him a chance to weigh in here.
Thanks. So I had a couple of thoughts about this and I think they're in line with some of the things that I've said and then some of them run into question. So obviously the, the main intent of this, well, the, the main intent of this, uh, this amendment is to reduce barriers. To accessory dwelling units. Great. I think that the majority of the language here accomplishes that. I do agree that we do need to have a discussion about existing buildings and where they might be and setbacks, et cetera, too. Because they shouldn't be ruled out just because, you know, based on the, the, um, general language. You know, your barn, for instance, couldn't be converted because where it's sitting now is not within the appropriate setbacks, right? When you start, uh, when you start getting into converting, uh, something into multi, multiple units. Or wanting to add more than one unit that doesn't exist. I think that gets a little tricky and might start to stray outside of the main intention of the amendment. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but it starts to, now we're starting to talk, uh, in, about, um. Uh, essentially multi, multi-family unit. And we have to look at, just like we've created the parallel with duplexes, we have to start looking at. Are these going to be allowed in places where multi-family units might not be? Or have specific requirements that might be different than what we're allowing. Um, so I just think, I think we have to be thoughtful about that. Um, I'm not against someone who has a giant barn, having some sort of process to convert that into two, four or five units. But it's a different, I feel that the intention there, it starts to become different than what we're looking to do here. But again, at the base of it all, our goal is to add more units for people to live in East Hampton. So just throwing that all out there.
Okay, uh, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, I, I tend to agree and I frankly think that there's really good, that's, uh, this is an edge case where I'm not even sure how many properties we're looking at. That could actually functionally do this, where I would see a, a more likely case where there could be. A case for multiple accessory dwellings could be a case where somebody puts in a backyard. You know, cottage type thing. And then a few years later, they're building a garage and they've decided, well, maybe I'll put another one up. You know, the garage. And at that point, I think it, that I, I'm okay. I'm comfortable with that being the sort of thing that maybe you have to go to, um. You know, maybe you have to go to the ZBA or the planning board, um, and, and sort of just, and, and do a special permit process for that. But I do just think it's important when we start looking at these things, that there is a section that talks about what things. The ZBA can consider. And if there's something that we want to allow them to ever do under any circumstances. Even if it's a total edge case, we probably do need to make sure it's in there. Or else there's going to be a real ground for, um, people to just say like, sorry, that nothing in this zoning says that. We can allow a special permit for this.
Yeah, and the, the more that we stack into that later section, you know, it, it might be just language tweaking at this point. But like, it can say, you know, any wave, like waiver from any provision of this section. Like such as, like, or including but not limited to, and then list some like, like, especially if you're not limiting it, like, and you're just giving some examples. Like the, in this case, the word, you know, all the words are really important, but like, you know, any, like waiver from any provision of this. You know, it sounds like that's probably where we'll end up. And then just, I think we could come up with a good solid list of like the types of things that would be included and certainly not limited to those. Cause we don't, we don't, we won't know every case. Like, we don't know, like, Tom's kind of the edge example is like, we don't want to prevent something that we didn't think about. That's for sure.
Jeff, I think that was a really, that's a really important point because you, you, you never, I mean, I, I think, and Tom, I, I like the idea of like putting those things in. Makes a lot of sense. But the, the piece that there is always the, the one thing that we didn't think of. And you know, if we didn't think of it, then oh, now you're stuck. It's kind of like doing the reverse of what we're trying to do. You know, so I think Jeff's point of having that, um, you know, a waiver from any provision of this i- is an important piece. That's an important piece. So.
Okay, so I'll take a, I'll take a stab at, um, at just, uh, writing that up in a way that, um. That just, that, that uses these, but that says that really any provision, uh, can be waived.
Yep, I think that makes sense.
Can we move on to E? Because this is one where I actually have some, you know, we, we discussed this for a while. And, and I have some, uh, thoughts on this one. And I think we're, I think we're all on the same page here.
Yeah, let's go, let's go there.
Okay. Um, so this is the one that says that, um, there shall be one off-street parking space for the accessory apartment. In addition to off-street parking required by the principal dwelling. And I have some concerns about this and, and, and my concern. I mean, uh, it really is about the fact that, like, just, just as an example. A lot of the people who are talking about these sorts of things are talking about them for elderly family members. Who may not be able to drive. But also they could, there's lots of people who don't have cars. There's also, it could be somebody who just has a, like, that lives alone and has a two, three car driveway. Um, and that driveway is sufficient for them and an additional person. And so I worry that this could create a, um. A, 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 a barrier that, that is A, expensive. I mean, I, I just, um, expanded part of my driveway, um, this fall and it was quite pricey. Um, but, um, it could, it also potentially could be a barrier depending on. Like if your driveway is right up against your property line, that could just rule out a project like this altogether. Um, and so my thought was to sort of, I, I, my, my thought was, was to basically just not have this section. And if people are in a place where they're going to need additional parking, then. then they'll have to get it. But I, I don't want to force people to get more parking than they need because I think there could be a lot of situations here where somebody's specific circumstances, um, don't actually line up with, or don't actually require them to expand their driveway. Jeff, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'll defer to Council of Risk first. Someone that, I think on what, I think on this for a minute.
Well, obviously my concern, Tom, is I don't want to see a lot of cars starting to be parked on streets. On the other hand, Jeff, I have a big question. Where, how many parking spots are allowed for a single main dwelling? Is that based on square footage? Like if I have a 3,000 square foot home versus a 1,200 square foot home? It, it says there, required for the principal dwelling. Is it one parking spot per principal dwelling? So if I have a driveway, I can easily get one more parking spot in there. I'm just curious, because that's the, that's where it's all starting here. What's the principal dwelling requirement? And do you know anything about that? If a home is built in any residential district, how many parking spots, off-street parking spots must they have? Or do they have to have them?
Tech, technically, if you looked at the zoning, it would say two spaces, you know, for a dwelling unit.
Really?
It's, this one might, I don't want to bog us down. So this one might, we might need to put this one in the parking lot, but eventually. But you know, the enforcement of parking is, is just not, it's not the city's best feature. It's probably not many towns like best feature of enforcing like the parking regulations for, especially when you're residential. Um, I think the important thing to note is that in the first sentence, you know, if, and there is another, actually, sorry, the two things. In the amendment package, there was a proposal to reduce the parking requirement for the principal dwelling to one, one space and then one space for the ADU. So we are trying to reduce the, the actual like technical requirement on the, except the, the actual house, the first house. And then, so it's one and one. Part of this is to understand that if you have two spaces, you don't need to do anything. You just need to kind of prove that you have the, the space to park two cars. It's always going to be this, the, the rub between the people who don't need it and then the people who do. And then how like, it's the, obviously it's the people who do. Like, we just want to talk through what are reasonable things to request. Um, cause again, where we don't want too much discretion is that the building per, the, the building permit or the building inspector, like we want to try to reduce the amount of discretion that's there. Um, so I need to think this through. I do agree, there was a flag on the last sentence. So, um, I think stating that last sentence is overkill because I don't know that we're really enforcing that anywhere in town. It says no parking in the front setback. It, it's such a trick because if you have a driveway and you park in the front setback, you know, that's legitimate. But if you park on your lawn, you know, there's, this may take a little bit and I'm sorry if I'm just muddling this. I think part of this is that the, a, a new parking space needs to be improved. Like that's one of the big things aesthetically that we want to make sure that we capture is that if you do need to add, so if you have a driveway and you need to add that pull off for that second car, like we want to make sure that we're not going to create mud puddles and ruts and just have this really ad hoc, kind of like thrown in the grass parking spot. So in Amherst, the way they dealt with it is that they required it to be, they set some standards on what it would be built as. So gravel, you know, compacted gravel, you know, maybe we go that route and, and just make sure that there is, it's, it's the discretion, because you would say like, if you need it, right? And so that's the part, that's the hardest part is whether someone needs it or not. And how do we regulate it in? So I guess my point is that a lot of, a lot of residential units will be able to support it with a driveway. Or just that little add-on kind of pull off for, for that extra car. It's, it's all those other cases that we have to imagine, I guess, for a little bit.
Okay. Well, if you want to come back to this, that's fine. I just wanted to get it in your head because it just seems like I could think about a lot of cases where potentially it wouldn't be, well, okay. And, and no, and you make a good point that if, if we're, if we're, if we already, I see, I thought that what we were talking about with the parking requirements, that that was just for the multifamilies. But, um, if, if you're saying that that, that'll also apply for single families, then that, that might be fine. I just, I, I think about just cases where, right? If it's a person living alone and they want, and they have a driveway that could support one car and they put an ADU in place for an elderly family member who cannot drive, it would seem like a shame to tell them that they have to double the size of their small driveway in order to accommodate a car that will, that doesn't exist. That's, that's my big concern. I, I would hate for somebody to not do something like this because they, um, they don't have space on their property to, to expand a driveway to accommodate a car that doesn't exist. But we can keep going. Um, and yeah, that was my second thought was just like, how do we even enforce that? Because like, when it's, when the parking ban isn't going in the winter, like in my neighborhood, there's a ton of people parking on the street. Um, and I don't know who they are, if they're visitors or renters or owners or what.
There's someone on Plain Street that parks in like half in the yard, half in the road. So you almost have to like go into traffic and that's, that's every day.
Yeah. Well, yeah. I mean, I live on Holyoke Street. So obviously there's not a lot of people parking on the street.
Well, Plain is, is, is really pretty well-traveled too. And, and that's not enforced. So it's like, you tell someone they can't have this and, and then they drive down Plain Street and see if someone's parking half in the road. I mean, Dan, you must know about that one. Yeah.
I mean, I think, I'll just preview this. So the, the way that I've read our zoning before, for cases, for, for certain cases is that for five or fewer parking spaces, we actually do not have regulations. We don't, you know, we don't dictate what happens for five or fewer. So the section in, it's 10.14, it says, you know, that we have additional, additional, um, standards for areas of five or more. And then the first thing is parking spaces shall not be located within the required front yard in any district. But that's for five or more. And so you have a single family house that like today would require two. So you could have that house with two, like the mom and the dad. And then you have your, your, your kids who are old enough to drive, that's three and four spaces. That's four cars that you could park all over the lawn, right? And, and I don't know that we have the enforcement ability for parking spaces under four to regulate this properly. It was, it's a huge debate. It's, it's going, you know, if we, if we really need to dig into that, we're going to get kind of homeowners from all over the place, kind of worrying that we're going to come start enforcing what they're doing. So there may be, we should, we should be able to find a way to, to work through this. Um, but I would argue, on one hand, I would argue that if we reduce the requirement for the main house to one and the ADU is one, two, you know, having to, having, showing space for two is not insurmountable for the majority of cases. So, cause beyond that, we're going to get into a lot of discretion at the building inspector level that we may not, we may not, we may never make it out of that, um, set of questions, but.
All right. Well, let's, let's keep talking about it. Yeah. I agree. If we reduce that to one, then that should in most cases be fine. And if there's a case where they really can't reduce it to more than one and they don't need more than one, say if it's a person who is blind, right? They, they, they don't, they can't drive at all. That's a case where potentially they, you know, maybe that's allowed by a special permit.
Well, maybe we can really get, if we got really crafty, we could write something in where like, if there's like re, a real legitimate document, like something that you could document that the person's not going to have a car to reduce that, like it's just something that the building inspector would have to get handed and be like, okay, this is you, you're, you have a disability, you don't have a car, like that kind of thing. You know, then of course we wouldn't really want to require the addition of a parking space. So let's, let's think on that one. There might be a way to like, make a really clear exception for something that's just really obvious that we don't want to do. And then we might have to just put two as a minimum for, for most other cases.
Okay. Yeah. I think we can work on that.
It sounds good.
Um, let's see. Oh yeah. So this is one that's a, that's, that's, that is a precinct five question from-
Hold on, you skipped, you skipped the-
Oh, you're right. Yeah. We skipped the big one.
That's a big one for me.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Literally the big one.
My bad. Yeah. The big one. In fact, the one about size. So yeah, um, we had, there, so, uh, I think that we, we, there's really, this is the one about, uh, maximum, um, square footage. Uh, we were thinking that first of all, um, this whole 900 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area, the principal dwelling, up to a maximum of 1,100 square feet, that difference of 200 square feet is so small. We were wondering if it would be more simple to just say that the size limit is 1,100 square feet. What do you think about that, Jeff?
Um, I guess just to get me on the same page, I mean, are you talking about like the idea of a new structure at this point? Is that, is that where you're starting?
Let's, let's say that we're on this, yeah, let's say we're on the subject of new structures and then turn to existing structures in, well, actually, let's talk about existing structures first. Our thought was if it's an existing structure, it shouldn't be held to this requirement, um, at all. Does that work for you?
Yeah. I, yes. And that's, I think that's the easier one is I think, again, and, and I'm just practicing because this is, we're going to have to kind of like repeat this, you know, a lot of times over the next couple of months. But the idea with the existing structure is that we don't really need to worry about the size. It's already there. It's kind of like in the neighborhood. And so most, in most cases, we're not expecting any kind of change. It's really, you know, there'd be minimal changes to the exterior, but the size is kind of there. And if we're talking about one unit, right? Totally like that's, I think that's really good. There's that, the, the additional layer, and I guess I go back to this safeguard idea, is if we also had an owner occupancy requirement for one of the units, then I, then I would call this like bulletproof. You know, if, and if we, if we take out the owner occupancy requirement and that's a flexible, that's a flexible component, then I think relying on the fact that it's one unit and that the existing building is already in the neighborhood. And I think it's totally, you know, this is something that fits, it fits. I think it's totally good. Now for a new, a new structure is where, you know, every town probably has this debate. Um, and I don't know, you know, all numbers are arbitrary. So you could pick your arbitrary number and we can kind of go left or right of that and, and talk. I mean, that's, that, I don't know. I don't have any kind of real, um, I don't know what the other committee members have and for, from some kind of reference point. I think I had a conversation with Council of Risk and I don't know if you were going to say this, but like, we do have to work through how most of this has been pitched for years as being accessory. And so there are definitions of accessory. So if we go higher in numbers, we want to, we want to, you know, untether ourselves from, from accessory in, in the event that the, the second unit is bigger than the first one. I think that's kind of, maybe that's the, maybe that's a question. You know, like that the second unit can't be bigger than the, the first one. But I know that that's, this is all just for discussion.
Yeah. Let me, let me just jump in real quick, Dan, before I tell you. Um, so, you know, one of the things that was there was, uh, uh, tying it to the size of the, uh, the original structure, which, and I, and I think probably one of the reasons for that was to mitigate the size in relation to the property. So is, how come we, we don't look at property size to, you know, to tie proper, the size of the property, um, to the size of the accessory unit? Because it seems like that might be a better indicator of what the, the parcel could, could handle. I mean, if you have a gigantic parcel, it, it could probably handle a, a larger structure as an accessory compared to a really small, you know, property that would handle a smaller one and, and be in proportion. So like, I, again, I'm not married to this, but if we're trying to proportionalize the structure, you know, and, and fit it to the neighborhood, wouldn't lot size be a better indicator to, to use? I don't know.
The possible way, especially if you did lot size with some kind of cap.
Right.
Right? Maybe, you know, I don't, I, I don't want to get too crazy with adding more constraints. But yeah, I'm, I think it's a worthy of discussion.
Okay. All right. So Dan, go ahead and then, and then Tom, sorry.
My biggest issue with tying the square footage to the original dwelling where it says 50%, is that if the, the original dwelling is small, like it's 1,100 or 1,200 square feet, there's a lot of small ranches, but they have a big lot. Um, and then they are only allowed to put in a 550 square foot little cottage. To me, that's too small for the kind of people that I'm looking at, mother-in-law seniors to use. I know there's a lot of the new thing about tiny houses and things. And that's, to me, that's more for young people. So I'm wondering if we just make the maximum 1,100 square feet and not tie it to the original building. I mean, that's a pretty small dwelling, 1,100 square feet, isn't it? And I, I'd have to ask the housing, uh, people who did this, where did that figure come from? 1,100 square feet? Because it, it seems small enough to me that it's not going to overwhelm the existing dwelling. But it's large enough to be a nice cottage for somebody. But I, you know, I just don't want to have to force people that have small original dwellings to build a tiny house if they, that's not what they want for their senior, for their mother-in-law. You know what I'm saying? And, and I don't know what a definition of a tiny house is, maybe Chris can help us. But 600 square feet or 500 square feet is pretty small. If you, your original home is 1,200. All, and the existing structure, I'm glad what you said, because that, that gets us out of any problem with someone with a big barn and a small house. Like John is about to talk, this is how I started learning about this. He has that. And I think the existing structure helps us with that, what you were talking about, Jeff. But tying it to a small, tying the 900 square feet or the 50% to the original dwelling, that's a limitation I worry about. And, and I'm not, I'm not an expert on this, but I, I worry about how small is that cottage?
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, just not that I'm defending this too much, because I, I would like to see just a flat number personally. Um, but for what it's worth, it says 900 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area, whatever is greater. So if you have a house that's 1,000 square feet, your max wouldn't be 500, it would be 900. Um, so no one would be, the situation that you're talking about with like-
All right. I read that wrong.
Yeah.
Apologize.
And, and, and that's actually, that was my, I read it the same way the first time around. So I, I, I see what you're saying. But, um, uh, I, I just, for me, and like, I, I, I understand the idea of this house, like that the idea that sort of design wise, this should be kind of subordinate to the main structure. Uh, but just like, there's just sort of this knee jerk kind of equity concern that I have about the idea that people with large properties and large houses, um, are allowed to develop, bigger ADUs than, than people like me, um, with, uh, small properties and small houses. Just on, just sort of on a gut level, I, this isn't really a technical point. It just doesn't feel, um, I, I just don't love it from like a value standpoint. Um, and that, that's my, but in terms of the number, like if we decide it's 900 or 1,000 or 1,100 or whatever you want to call it, like it's, I'm not actually like, the actual maximum, I think, we're probably all talking about the same thing. We're not talking about somebody building like a McMansion with six bedrooms and a five-car garage in their backyard. But I do think that for me, I, I, my, just my, my initial gut preference would be that we decide that, that something, like a flat, um, number. And so anyway, that's my two cents.
And, and I think, I mean, it makes, it does make sense. I, I would say that, that it is a, it's a double edged sword because, you know, if you look at like West Street, for example, you have some, actually some relatively small houses on West Street. Um, there are a few smaller houses, really large lots. I mean, like multi-acre lots, um, which could, you know, could support probably a larger ADU. Um, and, and, and as far as equity, like I get that, I, but I think that it could also go the other way. If you're in an R5 and your neighbor is allowed to, and you're already pretty close together and your neighbor is allowed to build a pretty large structure, you know, is that, um, going to impact your quality of life? Um, more so than it would if you live out a little bit further on the outskirts with a larger property. And that, that same size unit, it probably won't affect the neighbor as, as intensely because you're already really close together in the zoning, you know? And so some people might be like, well, I live in R5, I'm being discriminated against because now I have to deal with all these structures in my backyard, you know? Um, so I mean, it could go either way. I, I, I honestly-
You know, um, so, I mean, it could go either way. I, I, I honestly, I'm, I'm fine with kind of a, a, a cap. I, I do think there should be some way to, you know, adjust it to the size of the property just to make it fit in the neighborhood. I, I don't know if that's just, if that's completely off base or, um, but I guess I'll, I'll risk being off base on that one. But, uh, anyway, uh, it looks like, uh, David has raised his hand, so go ahead, David.
Uh, David Cantler, Seven Southampton, uh, East Hampton, hopefully, obviously. Um, I'm wondering if there's, like, can people do two-story? So if I have a ranch, can I build an ADU that's two-story in my backyard? And does that impact someone's view from their, you know, back deck or something like that? Is there any requirement on the levels? Also, just about the, and, and I bring this up in this discussion of size, um, because like, I live in an eleven hundred square foot, two-story home. It happens to be a duplex, so my tenants also have the same amount of space. Like, that's a lot of space for the three of us who live here on our side. It feels like an ample amount of space, um, for the kind of building that you all are talking about. So I would personally be in support of something around a thousand or eleven hundred square foot flat cap.
Okay, thank you.
John Lozato, Lozato had his hand up originally, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I, I can't, I, if, just because everybody's on the side, so I can't see unless they actually raise their hand in the, uh, on the, Erica, how are you doing that with reactions to raise your hand?
Yeah, how do I do that?
Okay, so John, so it sounds like you might have had your hand up, so I'll go to you first and then I'll go to Counselor Flood. Is that okay, Erica?
Okay, great. Well, I, so I'm actually working on an ADU right now that speaks exactly to all of these comments that everyone's made from the beginning of this portion here. Um, so I'll start with what Jeff said. Um, so first we talked about, uh, grandfathering in the existing dwellings, because I have this case that sort of speaks to everything that just came up. So I have an eight hundred square foot house and I have a twelve hundred foot barn. Um, the barn is existing and it was a poor stables. It's probably, it was, the original building was probably, I don't know, fifty or sixty years old. And, uh, now it's renovated into this apartment. And the size requirements, obviously, so I'm basically waiting for the outcome of this, this ordinance change. But it is very true what Jeff said about, yeah, that thing's been sitting there for sixty years and it's actually, so, and, oh, and I also have an acre and a half of property. So I think that was a very, uh, that really plays a lot into it. I think the, you know, the amount of space that the property is should be a factor in here somehow. Because this building sits like over two hundred feet off the road. So it doesn't really affect the neighbors and, and, and as Jeff said, it's just been there for, you know, I, I don't know, I've had the property for twenty-two years. So, and the guy before me had it for twenty-something years and he had horses for lots of those years. So, but I just wanted to speak to, you know, what you're throwing around with the size requirements, because I got, I got, um, I'm with the ZBA now and I was a little bit misled in the beginning. I was told that because my building was detached, that the size requirements weren't going to be a factor. And then when I showed up to my first hearing, we just misread and misunderstood the zoning and it was a factor. And so now I, I, I really, I just have been basically continuing and, um, waiting because, uh, I'm not willing to split up my space because it's already constructed in such a way that it has an appeal that I can't really put a wall down the middle. And so I had this twelve hundred foot space and I guess if they don't, if you guys don't put the grandfather clause in for the size requirement for existing buildings, then I would be able to possibly fit the requirement by switching the two buildings and making my barn the main house and my house the accessory apartment, which we can live in. But then I will have to jump through other hoops such as it's further forward on the property, uh, and things like that, which, you know, I guess I could deal with if that, if it comes down to that. But I didn't see the, um, I didn't see anything in this document that shows that they're going to, um, grandfather in existing dwellings. Is that actually in there now or is it, you're gonna add it?
Well, say on your mind, I, I mean, I guess we are using the term grandfather. Actually, there was a case in a federal court that like, we're not supposed to use the word grandfathering to.
I'm sorry, I used that.
That's okay, everybody has. And I, it's hard to not, like, it's technically like not in vogue anymore. But, um, I just want to be clear, I think the idea that you could take, um, an existing structure and convert it with a building permit, right? So we're kind of, I think we're all on the same page with that. I just want to be clear that my understanding is that you would not automatically get grandfathered for the unit. Like, you would still need to, like, so let's say it was someone else who had a unit in there somewhere, like, you, you, you're not gonna get grandfathered from building codes or like health and safety codes, so you would be cleared of the requirement for zoning, especially if this passes as is, like your existing structure that had a unit in it. I just want to make sure that we're clear that we in zoning can't grandfather other.
I'm just talking about the size requirement, Jeff.
Yeah. I think the way that we are landing, my understanding is the way we landed with an existing structure is you could make a single unit with no size limit. It, it, the size limit is the, the extent to which you can fit it in the structure. Because I think that kind of gives us that safeguard of it's only going to be one more unit, which is what we're talking about all kind of across the board is one unit, it should be really easy. So the existing structure would not, the way I understood it was that an existing structure would not have a size limit attached to it. Which I think is beneficial in the way that your scenario that you, you explained would be, would be beneficial to that. I think the larger question that we had was more about a new structure, you know, on either a small lot or a big lot.
Yep.
If I could just add, John, we are looking at this and writing new language. We're just going over this to talk about it now, but I know new language will be added for pre-existing structures.
Right.
Yeah, it's right. Yep. So, uh, Counselor Flood.
Uh, John, thanks for the real-life scenario on that one, because, I mean, I think that was a great example. And, um, I just wanted to also just go back to what David said, because as we were talking about the maximum size, I'm sitting here in half of a duplex that's twelve hundred square feet on either side. It's, um, three stories with the attic and a lot of, a lot of what you see in New City. I mean, eleven hundred square feet is pretty substantial, um, a size. So I also have a question of, can you, is this multi-storied or, I mean, that, that feels, if somebody built this, I don't know, it seems pretty substantial. When I think of an accessory dwelling unit, I'm thinking of something more smaller cottage size. So to now think of eleven hundred square feet being newly constructed, I mean, that feels like you're building a, just a second house on your lot. Um, so I'm, I'm sort of interested, Jeff, you mentioned before, there's a more of a, like a traditional way of looking at accessory dwelling units. How much are we veering from what is sort of the traditional size in going up to, on, specifically on the new build? I completely agree with existing units. They're there, let's retrofit them, let's use them. But on the new, on the new construction, um, I mean, eleven hundred square feet feels like we're, we're giving leeway to build a ranch in somebody's backyard. It just, it's, it's, it feels quite substantial. So Jeff, uh, any, any input on like what traditional?
Yeah, and I'm probably, I mean, yeah, I think that eleven hundred seems high. It seems like if we're going on this traditional idea of what an accessory dwelling unit is, twelve hundred is, it's like twice as big as like what a six hundred square foot, you know, ADU would be. Very generous, I think. Um, not to say that it shouldn't, it shouldn't be that way, but I think it's, I think it's very much on the large side for an ADU. You know, they, a couple of quick things. So right now, the way it was written is that we're, we have setbacks. So the way that setbacks works is that you have a, a setback, instead of, you have setbacks for a principal building. So like you have a lot and you're gonna build something new. So like you're gonna build a house, like a normal, like any kind of house, you would have the principal structure setbacks. And as of right now, I think the conversation is that the ADUs would have to fit those principal structure setbacks. And as long as that's the case, then I think you would have, you would have, like, you could do two or three stories. Like I, I, to, uh, David Cantler's question, I think, like, yes, it is presumed that if you're meeting the setbacks, then you could build a two-story, you know, structure. We have to make sure we clarify along the way, like what, we're talking about gross square footage, right? So if you had a two-story eleven hundred square foot, that's, that's basically five fifty and five fifty um, stacked up, right? So we have to just think through those. The other note that I made to myself, um, and mostly because I didn't eat dinner yet, I'm getting hungry, but I, part of what we're doing with the, with the numbers is this cap of nine hundred square feet or eleven hundred square feet is we're, we're picking a, a number that we think is reasonable, that it would be compatible to kind of poke, poke in another building on a, on a lot. And I think we're kind of dancing around these numbers because the only other alternative is to go through probably a rather long kind of design exercise and really come up with like really specific design standards for what this will look like, where it's gonna be located on a lot, how tall it's gonna be, what kind of roof it has, what color it's gonna be. And I just want to, like, I think that there's some merit in the size, kind of keeping it kind of small, because we then don't really have to dive into the design requirements, because I think that would really, it would really slow this down and I think it would prevent us from passing this for, for a little while. I think the notion about Northampton and what they're doing, I just, I always just kind of temper that because I, I did, I did look at some of the, what they're looking at and it's, they've been working on it for five years. To, to make duplexes by right, um, in every neighborhood, sounds awesome. It is really innovative. But there's like eleven pages of design scenarios that you have to meet in order to get your duplex by right. Um, and they, they spent more time on the design components and they don't have a size, whereas we're kind of gonna maybe talk about this size cap to allow this to move forward with a lot less design criteria being written out. And so it's a little bit of a, a give and take, I think, on, on the size question.
Okay. Uh, it looks like Dan has his hand up, so go ahead, Dan.
I just want to thank, um, Erica, because.
Oh, mute yourself.
Uh, I wanted to put in eleven hundred thinking of the size, but um, she emphasized her own home. I, I don't want two or three stories. I, I like the cottage idea. And if we cap it at six hundred square feet, but do not tie it to the main home, six hundred or seven hundred, if that's a cottage and we say it has to be a single story, that gets more into what I'm thinking these accessory dwellings are, a little cottage for one person. And I have to admit, I'm not quite sure how big is eleven hundred square feet, and Erica helped me understand that. Because I, I, I just don't, I, I see that scenario of having two or three stories in the backyard, it's not working for me and that would get the neighbors upset. So I'd be happy with a smaller square footage and putting in single story. Is that, is that something unusual, Jeff, to have single story be written into something like an accessory dwelling amendment?
Yeah, I think it would be limiting. I think like, yeah, because if you think of even like a garage, someone who wanted to try to do a, over the garage, but this is, this is a good conversation. This is, this is why we're having this, but like, that's, that was, I think you would, I think the argument would go like nine hundred or less to kind of give, make sure that we have this kind of smaller feel. I think that's one option. Um, I know that, um, Christopher Lee, you know, I think he, he has developed an ADU that is a two-story structure. But I think going forward, I do want to make sure everyone understands that the principal structure setback is kind of good in one way, because he, someone could, and I'm not saying it's really realistic, but like in the plains or something, you know, someone could, someone could demolish their house and build right up to those principal structure setbacks, you know, two, two and a half stories. So as a, as a butter to one of these, like you would, it, you have to be prepared for your neighbor to build to their principal structure setback at two, like two and a half stories. I think that is not unreasonable, but a, a very large new sort of accessory structure might, that might, that might be where we have this little rub going with how big.
I'm, I'm gonna, uh, call on Counselors Eric, because he had his hand, and then John, I see your hand as well. I have it. So I can see everybody now, so this is good.
So I'm hearing a lot of the arguments for capping at certain sizes and I, I, I agree with that. I just, I have to think more about what that size should be and, and, um, um, I don't, I could see scenarios where it could kind of be excluding to cap this at a single story, just in terms of how a structure, the, the configuration of the structure you might be adding, um, an accessory dwelling on to. So, you know, total square footage, we do have to be mindful of. I don't, I don't have a number yet in mind, so just to think about that, that's all.
Okay, thanks, Owen. Uh, John?
I just wanted to mention that I thought, uh, Jeff, that there was a height restriction in the, at least in the old, uh, zoning ordinances for accessory apartments. It was like twelve or fourteen feet, I thought. Is that true?
Yeah, and I'm not, I got, yeah, that's, there's truth in, if you call it, if it's, if we use accessory structure step back, then that's where there is a height limit on an accessory structure. So like, if you think like a shed, you have to be a certain distance from the property line or it has to be below a certain height. But where I think we might want to land is if you're meeting the principal structure setback, they're bigger, like it's a bigger step back. But once you've achieved that step back, then you can do two and a half stories, which is what someone could do if they're constructing something new. It's something that we should peg somewhere to just review the setback, the difference between the setback requirements. Like on one hand, the way it's written now is that if you do use an accessory structure setback, you can get closer. That is what John was saying, you can get closer to the property line, but you have a twelve-foot height limit. And I remember some other conversations with Chris Lee that like twelve feet for an ADU height is like too, too low. Then you're like, you're not, you're not reaching your design potential because you have like a real, a height restriction.
Right, because you might have lot, lot size restrictions that, that forces you to go up instead of out, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
You can't have a forty-foot long building, so you need to have a twenty-foot long building. But then you could still make it eight hundred square feet by doing two stories.
Or not all of these are going to be detached things in parking lots, or sorry, but, but in backyards, like possibly you want to build an accessory dwelling that's on the side of an existing two or three story structure and you might decide that it makes more sense to match the, the height of the existing structure.
Yeah, that makes sense. So just in full disclosure here, um, you, you know, I'm prepared to go to eight o'clock tonight. Uh, and then I, I would like to move this to another meeting, uh, just for my sanity and everybody else's sanity and, and also the ability to eat some dinner, so. So do you want to just, do you want to look at one more in the next?
And as luck would have it, we have one more.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We're almost there. And it's, and it's one that I have, I'm gonna put money on this, that when I ask Jeff this question, he's going to go, that's complicated. Let me check with some. So this would be a really easy one, um, which is, this would mean, this would be putting new, some new structures in, on people's parcels. And Counselor Risk was wondering how that works, uh, with the Aquifer Protection District. And because this says that this basically supersedes, excuse me, any other zoning, um, that could, uh, that, that might, this section, uh, J right here, uh, the, so what is that, eight point five three J? It says, when the requirements of section eight point five conflict with the requirements of other sections of the zoning, uh, the requirements of eight point five shall prevail. Uh, Counselor Risk had some questions about whether that could cause any sort of concerns with the Aquifer Protection District. And so that, that's our last one.
Really complicated, we should table it. I'm just kidding. No, I, I did, I did think about this. I, I do want to just acknowledge it, because it's a good question, but there's, it's not, it's not a total restriction. I think we, we need to talk, like, most of the Aquifer Protection District, most of it. It's not all of it, but most of it is in the plains. So if you head out, it's like Lyon Street and everything, you know, basically to the side. I don't know, my, um, west, north, east, anyway. There are some restrictions that are kind of baked into. There are some restrictions that are kind of baked into that area to, to, it really crimps down the type of development that can happen in the plains and it's intended to support water, you know, regenerating into our aquifer, I mean, that's the purpose of it. I, I thumb through it and there's a section in Aquifer, um, it's section seven of our zoning, but that, um, there's a list of prohibited uses. So the two things that jumped out at me that are prohibited in the, in the plains, in the Aquifer District are duplexes and multifamily. So the good news for this conversation is that we're calling, like, the primary use is still single family. And then we have the accessory dwelling unit to that, and so we don't technically trigger, we don't trip into a duplex by, through this conversation, so if we are, you know, interested in opening up opportunities in, in that area as well, it can happen. Um, the other restriction that I think is pretty significant for people to be aware of in the, in the Aquifer District is that you have, um, some lot coverage limitations, so it's the amount of your land that can be covered by patio, walkways, driveways and buildings. And it's pretty low, so it's fifteen percent of your lot or twenty-five hundred square feet, whichever is greater. So that's one of the constraints that we should all be aware of, is that fifteen percent of a small lot, like if you have a small lot in the plains, you're gonna hit fifteen percent real quick. And then the baseline size for a lot out there is forty thousand square feet, which is pretty big, it's almost an acre, but twenty-five hundred, you get to pretty quick as well, especially if you have a long driveway, pool or whatever, like, so we just need to be mindful that there are some built-in constraints um, that might affect people in the plains, but I think by and large, the, to consider an ADU, you're not prohibited, nor do I think you should be. But I think there might be these other constraints that are a little bit outside of what we have control over in this, in this section.
So just, I guess my follow-up question would be, would this language, this section J right here be construed to say that this would supersede those requirements in cases where, like, say that you were right up against your, your total coverage and you wanted to put an ADU in and this section said that that was allowed and section seven said that it wasn't allowed. Would I be reading this right and saying that, that, that this wins out in that conflict?
I think section seven would win out, if that's what you meant. I think the, the mechanical problem that we have is that we can make amendments, say eight point five, in the accessory dwelling unit section, but we can't automatically amend something that's like three chapters away in the, we, you, we could package up, um, an amendment to section seven that somehow addresses impervious surfaces with, with respect to ADUs, but we just need to be mindful that will open up like a whole nother set of questions and people who might want to participate in that discussion, because there, there are people who have abided by, you know, those restrictions in the Aquifer for, for years, and so we want to be a little bit careful. I don't think we have the authority to change those Aquifer Protection Regulations in this.
Just to be a hundred percent clear, I'm not proposing that, I was just reading that, maybe I misread this. If, if we're saying that this is all allowed, but if you're in the plains, you're gonna also have to think about that Aquifer stuff. I think everybody's okay with that, it's just that the way that this section, do you understand why I could read this in a way that would make it seem like when it says the requirements of eight point five shall prevail would make it seem like like
This supersedes it.
Like it supersedes it?
Yeah, this, I think the wording might, the wording in this text right now might be a little wonky, whereas it's
Because it says the zoning ordinance, not this, like this section, and said, like basically pulls out the whole ordinance.
Oh, it does try to, it, it does try to say that eight point five will prevail, so I don't know, we need to check this, like I, I would just be worried that we, if we're talking about this restriction in the Aquifer Protection, section of the zoning, like, I don't think we can, I don't think we can vary it here.
Right, and I don't even want us to, I just
Okay, the good news is that
We've got to take care of our Aquifer.
Yeah, in terms of a use, like the ADU use is still allowed in the, in the Aquifer District, it's just gonna be, I think it's gonna be that limit on how much land you can cover, like that might actually, we might need to look at that section separately. Because that is like, if, if we get a lot of people from the plains who begin to encounter that, that might be, it's a little bit piecemeal, but it, it is an option for people in the plains if they can meet that limitation.
So Dan's had his hand up for a while, I don't want him to get too tired.
Two things, uh, I think this section J is dangerous, because a lot of thought has gone into the zoning ordinance, the entire package, hundreds of pages. And this is saying eight point five, I read it just like Tom does, it prevails. And I don't think we should put that into this. If there's things we want to write to override something, that we should talk about it. As for the Aquifer, I said anything larger than our forty could be an ADU, because forty thousand square feet is what the original intent was. And then you're talking about a percentage of that, if you have a larger lot than forty thousand square feet, and there are some, a lot of people have those, then it could happen. But the twenty-five hundred square foot and fifteen percent, um, that's a big restriction and I, I don't think I want to override that, even though I want the ADUs, I think permeability is what we're talking about, what can you cover in this area with non-pervable driveways, you know, buildings that doesn't allow water to recharge? But if you have a bigger lot, if you have a bigger lot than forty thousand square feet, you should be able to do it, but that goes back to the percentage, so the percentage may allow it, Jeff, right? Because you have a bigger lot anyway.
Yeah, and Dan, I just, um, I'm not sure if, if you have a lot that's less than forty thousand square feet though, because part of the plains used to be
Oh, I know there are.
Then it got upzoned, but so I just want to be clear that like if you had a twenty thousand square foot lot in the plains, you could meet the, you could have three thousand square feet of, um, lot coverage, which if you had a small house and a small driveway, you could still, you could still potentially pop in an ADU.
Okay.
As long as you're, as long as they're meeting those impervious limits, they should be eligible. When you get smaller and smaller on the lots, it's gonna be harder and harder, but
I, I will, I will concede that, you're right. But this eight J, we can't have that
Yeah.
if we're gonna try and protect the Aquifer, and there may be other zoning things that you don't want to open the door to, this, do you guys on zoning understand, I don't, that's dangerous?
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I don't, I, I don't know where this came from and, uh,
Well, whatever.
I don't, it might have been a mashup, I, I didn't catch this, I don't think we should, yeah, give carte blanche to the rest of the zoning ordinance, like within eight point five, like the variations that we've all talked about, I think that makes sense, but not like other sections that we're not aware of.
The requirements of eight point five shall prevail, that's really huge.
Yeah, it's huge. Uh, Counselor Zarek?
Yeah, I guess we just have to decide what we mean by that language and then either carve out exemptions to that language or, you know, I guess I need to know the intention of it, but, um, yeah.
Sounds good.
It might just get removed, I would think.
I, I think that's probably, I think that sounds like a good idea, uh, and you know what else is a good idea? Uh, us continuing to a different meeting and looking at a date, I'm thinking maybe the twenty-third? How you guys looking for the twenty-third? Two weeks from tonight.
Let's see.
It'd be fun, let me just check the calendar real quick.
Mr. Chairperson, I want, I want to just ask a question, I, I see, um, that there has been a member of the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership on the call and I, I don't know that you would normally do this, but I don't know if he had anything to say and we don't offer just that real opportunity or whether that was just a listening.
Oh, yeah, I guess I was, I was still missing, I thought I could see everybody, but I guess I couldn't.
Twenty-three is fine for me.
I just want to say goodnight, everybody, thank you for letting me participate.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, so if, Owen, is that okay with you and I'll put it in?
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, and, and, uh, it looks like Brad Riley, if, if you have any comments you wanted to say before we adjourn, we're happy to hear them.
No, honestly, um, I, I haven't been, oh, I should at least say, um, I'm at fifteen Hudson Street in East Hampton, for the record. No, admittedly, I, I'm pretty new to the partnership and I'm just trying to brush up on everything related to the work that we're doing, so um, I've just been sitting in on as many, um, subcommittee and city council meetings as possible, just to um, better inform myself, to learn the acronyms and all of the ins and outs of, uh, city government, so this is really more just, um, uh, informational exercise for my own professional development and then, um, you know, I'm sure that uh, Jeff and Jamie will, you know, relay, uh, necessary information to us on the partnership and then um, I can take it from there, but no, I don't have any official comment, I've just been appreciating the work that you're doing and, uh, just being, uh, open with my ears, that's all.
Awesome, well, thanks for coming, appreciate it. And so, um, so we will, uh, meet again on March, uh, twenty-third at six P M. I'm gonna schedule that and, uh, and I appreciate everybody coming tonight and, and I hope you can come again on the twenty-third and where we continue this work. So appreciated, everybody, I'm, I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Owen Zarek?
Yes.
Tom, Tom Peak?
Hi.
And I vote yes too, everybody have a great night.
Have a good one.
Take care.